Good evening, it is six oh two on Tuesday, November second. This is Robert Stevenson, I'm gonna call to order the regular meeting of the South of Collin Granville Regional School District, School Committee. Can I get a motion to start, second. Okay, we're gonna take a roll call vote to open the session. Pam?
Yes.
Brian?
You hear me? Yes?
Yeah. Ted?
John?
Yes.
Pat?
Yeah.
Erica?
Yes.
And Rob's a yes, motion passes seven zero zero. All right, our opening ceremonies, we can everybody stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, secretary's report, we have the minutes from October nineteenth. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes from the meeting from the nineteenth?
So.
Second. Any questions or comments on the minutes? I just made a note to Amy earlier, it was Mark that I was there, but I wasn't. Very good. Any other comments? Maybe none, we'll take a roll call vote to accept the minutes. Pam?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Cole said yes for you. Ted?
Yes.
John?
Same.
Pat?
Yeah.
Erica?
Yes.
Rob's a yes, motion passes six zero one. Okay, so warrants, we have some warrants going around that everybody's been looking at. Correspondence, Superintendent Willard, do we have anything for correspondence tonight?
We do not tonight.
Okay, fantastic, that takes us to our first public comment section. Anybody wishing to hear in person to make a public comment? You have three minutes at the podium. This is not meant for a discussion, just an opportunity for you to voice your opinion to us here on the school committee. At the end of the three minutes, Amy will kind of raise her hand a little bit if you go that long. They'll ask you to wrap that up and we'll continue until everybody's done. So is there anybody here that would like to speak to us at public comment? All right, thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna go on to student advisory reports, and next Saint Jacque, what do you got for us this week?
Marissa's doing it.
Oh, Marissa, okay. No pressure.
So the first thing that we have is that volleyball competed in the Western Math Finals past Saturday at West Side High School. And after being sent into Frontier, their teasing continues to the state tournament, and they have a home game tomorrow at six. Field hockey also made it into the preliminaries of the state tournament. Their game is Thursday at South Yarmouth at two thirty.
Soccer's to be determined. Girl soccer.
I was just checking.
And student athletes all completed their seasonal coach assessments after school today. The SRS clubs were able to participate in the trunk or treat at Wally Park this past Sunday. Student council, SAD, the math team, the class of twenty twenty-two, and class of twenty twenty-three all were there to catch that game. And yesterday Officer Sanders, a school research officer, and Mr. Pescatelli spoke at the SAD club meeting. They spoke about how to keep a safe school environment and how to encourage their peers. And for senior student government, the election will be held during lunch on forums Tuesday, November second. Students that place first and second will become lead delegate and alternate for the program. The Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership State Leadership Seminar is still open for sophomore applicants. And seniors helping seniors has their fall scene updates scheduled as this upcoming Saturday. Students volunteer to help with leave removal for homes of students in the community through any chance. Yeah. And guidance is hosting college instant decision days, November sixteen through the eighteenth. And to close, grades close Friday for all students.
That's, thank you very much. Did a great job. All right, on to educational presentation. Superintendent Willard, is that yours? I'm a second.
We're going to go to the podium.
Oh, wow. It's official.
It's official. Okay, so every year I am honored to present the Massachusetts Association of Schools Superintendent's Award to one student at the regional school who embodies all the traits we strive for for our graduates, leadership, scholarship, and perseverance. This year's recipient has been a leader during her time at the regional school. One example of such leadership was when as a sophomore she was selected to be the witness at the mock trial at the Hampden County Superior Court, where she had to spontaneously present this role in front of a real judge and her peers. I'm not sure which is more intimidating. She has displayed such leadership in field hockey, indoor track, and softball as well. Our recipient this year also excels in the classroom with a one hundred point nine nine grade point average. She plans to major in biology with a focus on biological engineering, which I'm going to have to ask you what that actually is. Her guidance counselor states that she is a rare mixture of modesty and confidence, merriment, and seriousness. And for all of these reasons, I am proud to present the Massachusetts Association of Schools Superintendent's Award to Devin Fox.
Put it on his back corner.
Usually deal with the logo.
That would be nice.
Yeah.
Your face.
I know.
No.
Pam, do you want to choose for grace? It's gonna change.
Could say like a change.
If we want to get a picture without our masks, I won't go outside right now. If we want to take the masks off to get a picture for the camera.
We can do it when we're after.
Okay, are you sure?
Thank you.
Okay. Congratulations, Devin.
Mr. Carmel, you were up, sir.
Right. Were you, uh, audio or?
No, you can come to the table. Sit wherever you want.
Usually have my hair.
Thanks, Marissa. All right, so, um, do you want me to start with the strategic plan first?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two strategic plan, the site strategic plan, and our objective at South River Regional School. We really try to focus on about three or four initiatives each and every year that run across the four pillars. And that's the theme that you'll see tonight as I present what we're doing, our objectives in the school under each of the pillars. For the diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging pillar, our high impact initiatives include for our staff, professional readings and discussions, trainings on how to approach the equity work and how to engage in the conversation. This is year two of our professional learning plan around this, this work. EDL is gonna come in and do a training focus focusing on how to talk about issues of equity using common language and really provide the framework for what we're doing. We will have a residence training as well for our staff in December, and this focuses on how to talk about equity through empathy and shared experiences of understanding how we really interact with each other. And then ultimately, how do we support our staff, our teaching staff to be culturally responsive with our students in the classroom each and every day? For our students, Mr. Pescatelli and a few of our staff members were introduced to a connections program that was started by the principal in Sutton, Mass., which has had great success and really a model throughout the state, and I believe the principal was up for National Principal of the Year for his work around this program. And, and Mr. Pescatelli and the teachers were so excited about the impact that this program could have on our school in creating a sense of belonging and community within our own school that we started it this year. It's called our Connections Program. And what it really is, is a peer-to-peer intervention program where it is not administrators coming down and saying, this was wrong, and here is your punishment, and this is why it's peers having a discussion of around how they feel about the language or the actions or the symbols that might be used throughout the school. And so it creates more of a sense of community and understanding around what we do and how we treat people in the building each and every day. We also engage in, that's a connection problem, a safe school. So Safe Schools is a learning, it's an online learning module that provides education for, we use it as a staff for a lot of our trainings, but we, there's a training as well for students. And again, when students misbehave or there's an action or language that that we want to address, instead of just putting punitive measures in place, we try to provide an educational resource as well. And so there might be some readings or discussions, interventions that are put in place for students to have a better understanding of the impact of their words or their actions, and this is what the Safe School module does. And it should be followed up with a discussion by one of the teachers or administrators in the building, so we can process the behavior with the students and have a better understanding of how we want to move forward and improve. Our social emotional learning integrated into our lesson plans, we've worked with Alice Hershberg for a number of years on this initiative, and, and really it's becoming more of a trauma-informed school where teachers embrace one-to-one conferencing with students. It heavily focuses on a tiered intervention of support, and so our focus this year is our teachers know this, our teachers understand this, our teachers implement this in the classroom each and every day. What we're working on this year is our process to make sure that our interventions that we put in place for our students are not isolated for just the teacher, are not isolated for the counselor, are not isolated in just the interventional, interventionalist way. But everyone is, is on the same page, understanding, planning, developing, implementing, collecting the data, and supporting the students with the intervention. And, and it's more of a collaboration, and, and this is all, the students are all of ours, not just yours or his or theirs, it's everyone has investment in each and every one of the students, and we're going to work on our tiered intervention process together to meet the needs of our students individually throughout the school year. That is, that is the first pillar. Any questions that you may have on the first pillar? Any of the initiatives that I've listed there?
Joe, and the last one that you were just talking about, is that for kids with IEPs five oh fours, or is that anybody?
This is anybody.
Okay.
This is really anybody. It's, it's, it's being proactive.
Okay.
You know, so many of the students are coming into schools with different needs, and we want to offer all the supports that we can to the universal support that we can get to students in the classroom. There's your, there's typically tier, three tiers of support, and the classroom is tier one, and, and a lot of times that, that gets overloads. We want to make sure that we're supporting the kids and the teachers at the tier one level. So the second pillar is, is our guaranteed and viable curriculum. The cornerstone for this is our universal design for learning, which is, which is our teaching approach. And, and what the universal design for learning really is, it's an approach to the work to accommodate the needs and the abilities of all our learners in trying to eliminate unnecessary barriers. And that's what we're looking to do at, at the very basic level. We have consultants come in, we've worked with a man by the name of Neil Barrow from Cast who has been wonderful. Our teachers have really invested high energy in their trust in this man. He listens to their feedback, he listens to the direction of Mrs. Sullivan, the curriculum director, and the administrators of what we're looking to do, our initiatives, our focus, and implements them into his professional learning plans for, for the teachers. This year, instead of doing just a couple days, he is coming in almost bi-weekly in embedding the professional learning with the teachers in their lesson planning in the classrooms. So they are getting real-time support with how to develop lesson plans to meet the needs of, of the students at, at the tier one level. I know it's a goal and a priority for Superintendent Willard around utilizing the data and benchmark assessments. And so we're doing that as well at the regional school in our math and our literacy and in our world language. We're utilizing the benchmarks to assess the impact of instruction and where we are going next with our individual students. It's, it's real-time data for our teachers of being supported by the coaches that we have in the building on how we can support the students each and every day in the building. But another theme that you'll see across all four pillar pillars is our professional learning communities. And this is teachers getting together, taking the time each, each day, each week to work together in a community. The middle school had done it for a number of years around team time, lesson planning, technology integration, interventions for students, it's, it's part of their schedule. This year, thanks to the work of Superintendent Willard and the union, we have been able to work with the staff at the high school level to take forty-five minutes a week of, of their preparation time and, and turn it into a formative professional learning community where we're working with the teachers. The coaches are in working with teachers on lesson planning, on technology integration, on data collection and data review, looking at initiatives of the Justin Time Teaching, of the I-Rate benchmarks that we're putting in place as well. So, and the interventions that we've achieved one, the tier two, the tier three interventions that we're talking about as well. So that's how we're using this forty-five minutes a week with, with the staff at the high school around the professional communities. I think that is all of our initiatives under pillar two. Any questions or clarification under, under that that I can?
How has that changed about forty-five minutes a week in this camp while being received?
Um, they've been, they've been very good about it, I think. I think because we provide an agenda, because we provide structure, because we, because we provide the supports of the coaches and our counselors utilizing that as well. It's forty-five minutes is a lot to give up of preparation time for our teachers given this year as well with all they have to do to meet the needs of the students in the class. So, so we are appreciative of their, of their giving of the time, but we're, we're seeing the value in that because we're utilizing it wisely, because it's time. We're really more efficient with our time and our support for our students, so I think they're seeing the benefits of it early on in the first quarter of the school year.
Good. I've long been a proponent of that, and I'd love to see that continue because, you know, the middle school central, the teen model builds itself nicely to that. It's extremely effective, you know, when properly implemented.
Yes.
You know, I, I'm super happy to see that change, and just kind of want to see it continue.
Yeah, I mean, we have some money to encourage, no doubt about it, um, at, at, at the high school level to, to improve the efficiency and efficacy of it, but we're working at it, and our, and our, our coaches and our counselors have been excellent at setting an agenda and providing strategies and interventions and supports to teachers, and the teachers have been fantastic about coming into it prepared and open-minded and following through on it. So everyone's doing, doing it with fidelity, which is, which is great to see. Okay, so instructional technology that we are, I mean, this has been, this has been here for a number of years. Again, Superintendent Willard has, has made this a priority, given the one-to-one initiative, I think we moved it up maybe three, four years, given where we were with pandemic. And so that continues to be part of our learning and growing processes, is how to integrate technology into the classroom, knowing that's in the hand of our students each and every day. We're, the utilization, utilization of teams, which is where teachers post work, where, where students post to work. We're using that as a communication and intervention for our students and families. The use of teams, we've seen the, the improvement of independence of five oh four meetings, IP meetings, conferences at the high school level have, have increased because of, of teams and Mrs. Sullivan has, has put, made that a priority, has renewed the subscription of every employee, every professional at, at SRS to have a Zoom license. So we're utilizing that, we're seeing the benefits of that this year as well, as far as engagement from, from families and students through the use of teams, and with the technology, it's a data collection attract. How we're utilizing, how our teachers and our staff are utilizing that, anywhere from the, like I said, the world language, to the math, to the literacy, to, in, in our counseling department, students are signing in in forms, which is our way of collecting data for us to, to track how many students are coming in, the reasons that they're coming in, the supports that they're receiving. And so we hope to use, utilize that data to see where, where, why, and when our students are coming down to to counseling departments and potentially that correlation to their, their grades, their attendance. You know, their peer interactions, their after-school activities and, and all that. So we haven't, our counseling department is, is fantastic, and they do a wonderful job, and they've always had an open-door policy of kids coming down. But, but now providing this, this data will give us a little better direction and understanding of why our students and how our students are utilizing our counselors moving forward. And lastly is the engaged learning.
Quick, quick question about that. I'm just curious, like the, the use of Teams at Microsoft Teams, right? Is that where that?
Yeah.
So what did they, just, I'm curious, because we just started using this organization like six months ago where I work, and we've used it for all sorts of collaborations. So do they use it to like share assignments, or what, what's the?
Yeah, I mean, Teams is really where our, our teachers are posting the assignments, is where kids are submitting the assignments. It's, it's, um.
You guys are using.
We've got a team jump on here.
All day, every day, like honestly, like thank God for the pandemic with regard to that.
Yeah.
That's, you know, because it was, it, it was something we were trying to get everybody by into prior to the pandemic, but it was really spotty, like one teacher would do it here, this assignment over there. Whereas like, I mean, I hate to say it, but COVID forced everybody to use it in a standardized way.
So everything's really submitted and done electronically.
So.
Yes.
It worked all last year, that's what we did all last year. Everybody already knows how to do it. It was kind of continued to this year. And some teachers are different, like we just did an art project in government today, but that was being handed in on paper, but we still use Teams so much.
Do you have channels and stuff to communicate?
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, the PowerPoints from our class lectures are all posted there, the, all the class resources, the bathroom sign-out sheets, all in Teams.
Every teacher creates their own Teams, each of their classes.
Everything is right there. We just, we just.
The Hartford would like.
You know, like some clubs, I mean, some teams of those too.
Yeah.
That's cool.
We'll send these two down to the Hartford and then.
Yeah. I struggle with it for several days.
And really the engaged learning is is all of what I talked about put together. We hope that the professional learning communities, we hope that the the training around diversity and equity, inclusion, and belongingness, the benchmark assessment, the multi-tier systems of support, the Justin Time Teaching, we hope that all of this leads to a more engaged learning experience for our students.
Any other questions on the first section? We should have the technology stuff. Yeah. Each of them have cell phones. What do you mean?
It's, it's actually really good for kids with executive functioning issues. They don't lose things.
Yeah.
They, it is.
Well, the best part is students are getting, you're getting training on stuff that you use it in large companies, you walk in, you've got a skill, you know how to use it.
Yeah.
You don't know how many people in our conversation.
Right.
You didn't, you didn't, you struggled for the color.
And what's interesting is a lot of schools use Google Classroom, but if you look at colleges, most colleges use Microsoft.
Oh, in most organizations.
And most organizations use Microsoft. So I know it's not as user-friendly as Google, but it really is a light skill that's transferable once they leave here.
Yeah, it really is.
And, and you know, it really isn't as user-friendly, especially in the, in the beginning. So again, thank goodness for the pandemic. It's just, it, you know, there were no excuses, it was forced.
Yeah. I think the way even our teams, the way it's structured, we all have our school emails too, so that makes it easy, and the teachers just create the Word documents, and then in Teams, since it's all connected through Microsoft, we just edit the document and turn it in, it's so easy. And it's like not having to remember anymore what you have to do for homework.
It's already there.
It's like, it kind of creates your own agenda book, and you create a calendar there.
Yeah.
You still have nightmares about missed assignments.
Locker company.
Well, they know when they're all due, like they're due at eleven fifty-nine.
Yeah.
It's like I have to.
The dog ate the last one.
Now, they have, I'm sure they've run into, some kids have run into connectivity issues, stuff like that, that you know, pop up.
Uh, but.
That's your dog ate the homework now.
Yeah.
Wifi was down.
Yeah. But this is what teams do, the teams, it, it eliminates a lot of the barriers, this is, this is what falls under the, you know, the universal design for learning, this, this eliminates a lot of barriers for students because it's all right there in Teams.
All right, on to the graphs.
On to MCAS, okay. So, um, a couple numbers that I want to, to give you before we start, so you have it as a baseline. We had eighty, eighty-three students take the grade ten exam. All students that took the grade ten exam needed to take it in school, in person. There was not a remote option last year for, for grade ten students. We had eighty-three take it in, in grade ten last year. The students that did not take it have an opportunity to take it in November, or take it next week. Math is next week, EOL is, is the following week for the students that didn't take it. Grade seven, we had a hundred and twelve students take it in grade, grade seven. Eighty-six took it in person. Twenty-six students took it remotely. And in grade eight, a hundred and seven students took the assessment with seventy-six in person and twenty-eight remotely. A few more data numbers to give you as you're looking at. Moving forward. So what I've done, I've gone back the, the last five years our achievement as a school and, and versus the state as well. Put the our school data in red. The state averages in black there. So our first slide, seventh grade EOL achievement. You see, we were right around the state average and exceeding and meeting, partially meeting below the state average and not meeting expectations, which is a, a good thing. Our average scale score, we're slightly above the state. And our SGP is student growth percentile. So how much students, how much growth they had from, from one year to the, to the next. The mean is, it's really taking the sum of the numbers, dividing it by the number of students, and that's, that's the mean. The mean is to call the scores and put them in a line in order. That's in the, in the middle point is, is your median. I share that just in case you didn't know that.
The sixth grade standard.
They were just working out it the other day.
You should know all this, it's okay to do.
Medium and both.
That's a concrete concept.
So what's important about, about the growth is it, it shows the impact that our teachers are having on our students from here, that, that's really a, the biggest indicator factor of our growth percentile. And what's nice is we can see here, not only was our, our achievement decent as far as compared to the state, but our growth was above the state average by six and eight collectively in our, our median, median in, in seventh grade EOL. And, and you can see we've been pretty steady, we've been right around there for, for almost five years now around the state average in comparison to the state. And both achieving in, in SGP in seventh grade EOL. In eighth grade EOL, where we took, where we had a. Where we took um where we had a little bit of a decrease this year was in our meeting expectations to a portion meeting expectations. Not only from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty one, but comparatively to the state. We were below it in the meeting category, above it in the partially meeting category.
And then a not meeting with bump back up.
Yeah.
These are our current ninth graders, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
But what's interesting, Joe, is the S G Ps.
Yeah.
Are higher than the state's S G Ps.
Yeah.
So that's interesting.
Yeah.
So it 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 shows in seventh and eighth grade, you look like the comparison between nineteen and twenty one. That are not meeting expectation in both, kind of, is is we think that's COVID related?
Yeah.
Like it looks like if you go from seventeen to nineteen, we were on a really nice trend. We had a bump at eighteen, but. We were on our way down and it but then.
You can see we're in the state as well, the not meeting expectations.
Yeah, but wait a minute, hold on, hang on, hang on, so I got a question, the the previous years. Is this this cohort's previous years or is this eight? Yeah, so it's it's it's.
No, I'm just, I'm just comparing, yes, not the same, it's not the same kids.
Right.
But it's the same grade, look at they look at how they were doing for seventh grade.
I think you're gonna see more consistency from cohort to cohort though, rather.
Yeah, no, no, agree, but I mean, this is certainly, it it, I'm assuming this would be. A subset of numbers that are going to be looked at. How is each grade doing? Like at that grade level, right, year over year?
Sure, yeah, I mean, it's gonna provide us, yeah, it's gonna provide us uh data on our curriculum.
We actually had that conversation this morning in our data meeting, we were talking about an item analysis. Um on each question, and I go i- in. It tells us that if overall the entire grade did poorly on a question, then that's our curriculum, and that's something that we need to make sure that we adjust. Uh Joe and I were, when we were having the conversation, he's like, we're either plus five or minus five on almost all of the questions. So it says that our curriculum is where it should be.
Yeah.
Um but we just have to make sure that we're, and we have intervention plans in place for the kids. Um who are struggling with moving.
So in tenth grade. E L A. There's some, there's some nice gains, and from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty one, we went up in. Our advanced or our exceeding and meeting expectations. Um and dropped in our partially meeting expectations, which is good. And in comparative to the state, our. Our exceeding is is below the state average, but our proficient is is above, which is nice, and our growth is.
Right on.
Right, you know, right with that.
And and we didn't lose anything on the thing. Or not meeting expectations.
Yeah.
It, I'm sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to point out that that there was what they called the legacy M C A S, and that's two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen. And that was mostly when the end pass, they they call them D O K questions, they're called depth of knowledge.
Okay.
And they range them from a one, two, three, and four. The legacy M C A S was really what they called D O K one and two. Not as critical on these new M C A S questions, which is why they changed it and the scores, we all knew they were going to start dipping. Was they increased the the um complexity of the questions on the new M C A S two point O. So we all knew that there was going to be a dip, which is why you can't compare two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen to the two thousand nineteen and twenty one, they're two totally different tests.
Yeah, yeah.
So I just wanted to um point that out.
These, these are all just again to I, it, questions were asked, but the um. The seven, like the twenty seventeen, those were the people, the kids that were tenth graders in twenty seventeen.
Yes.
Yes.
So we're, so it's always comparing back to a different set of kids.
Correct.
Pre, uh previous.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just have a really difficult time discerning anything from comparing.
Different kids.
Yeah, I just that I I don't know what to make of. A lot of it, like, you know, it just, I, it would make more sense to me if I could see how they progressed.
Cohorting.
Right, like.
If you take this and you look at the seventh graders.
Yeah.
And then you flip the page and you look at the eighth graders, that gives you what you're looking.
Yeah, because the seventh graders in seventeen would be the eighth grader in tenth. Gotcha. Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see that, like, real, but I know they're not all the same measures, like, so the test has changed, it's hard to. Figure out what's, everything seems about down the middle here, but.
I mean, honestly, if you wanna just go year to year, just compare the the red and black. And school to state.
Yeah.
I might explain trucks to me, the red is always bad.
Either bad or maybe, right? Well, budget, it's a budget.
It's not gonna work, red, like, oh.
Yeah.
Um so, moving on to the math, seventh grade math achievement. You see that we're below exceeding, we're above the meeting. We're in three percent window for partially, but below in in that meeting, which again is a good thing. You can see where our average scale score is is right at target, but you can see where our seventh grade math achievement growth was.
Significant.
Fifteen and sixteen percent higher than than the rest of the state.
Yeah, that's really good.
Yeah.
Wow.
You can see, I mean, I I I completely understand what what you're saying about this not being cohort data, but what this does provide us is you can see. That our seventh grade math teachers, with their growth being fifty eight, fifty seven, seventy one, fifty, which is continued above the state average, that our curriculum and our math teachers are having. An extremely powerful impact.
Yeah.
On our students. In front of them.
Yeah, well, I think like Pam said too, just focusing on what our number is to the state is really the.
Yeah.
Key there.
Right, because if you look at eighth grade math in isolation, you would say, oh my, but when you look at it compared to how the state did, it's an, oh my.
Yeah.
So. Yeah.
This was um. For for the grades that I'm responsible for, eighth grade math was the grade level in the subject area most impacted across the state.
Mm hmm. Yeah. Look at the mean median S G Ps.
Yeah.
Wow. Yeah.
Wow.
It's about where my math.
And then our tenth grade math achievements. Was right mine with with the state, again, the growth was a little bit higher. And then in eighth grade uh. Science. Technology of engineering. No growth in in the sciences, because they just take it one street.
Well, also, the thing with the science tests, which is really frustrating, is that they're cumulative tests. So the kids take this eighth grade science test, and it's cumulatively what they should have learned in grade six, seven, and eight. And the same thing is true for fifth grade tests, although that's all of elementary school, that they do in one shot, so like, I mean, it is. So hard to compare and to really glean any kind of data from it.
Yeah. But Superintendent Willard said too, we looked at our item analysis as well, which is looking at the questions and what questions do standards fall under. And and again, they give you comparative, how you did, but compared to the rest of the state. And and the administrative team and our coaches this summer looked at that in depth at all grade levels across um. Math, English, and Science. And and as Superintendent Willard said, we were, we were within a a minus five to a plus five window. And and we we had some where we were much better than the state. Uh but we didn't have any where we were minus five, or more than minus five, which which indicates to us that. Our curriculum is is aligned to this, to the state standards, and that we felt we didn't need to. Look at our our units of study, our lesson plans, that we had this gap in in our curriculum that we were, that we weren't getting for our students. And so now our focus really is uh this Justin time teaching that we talked about, our our interventions. The tier one supports that we can put in place for our students in the classroom. Um, you know, to help them with the achievement levels this school year.
Is probably obvious, but we get, we we get data back for these. That tell us for these kids that were which areas are the problems or.
Yeah.
So we get individual that plan to then do what you're talking about.
Yeah, so I was just gonna ask if your teachers have M C A S data results, and if so, what do they do with them?
Well, we we do, um.
It'll seem like they give an individual plan for each student.
Yeah, there's.
Or you at least know what their deficiencies and proficiencies are.
So you, what you would do is, if you, as a classroom teacher, I would want a copy of how my students did the previous year. So I know as a teacher.
Yeah.
What specific item and items I need to refocus on. But I'd also like to get the M C A S scores and the item analysis of the kids who are in front of me now. Because that tells me what I need to preteach to the kids who are in front of me and make sure I shore up those standards. So even though you have two sets of item analysis, one is reflective of your practice and one tells you what you need to do for the kids in front of you this year.
And that's, that's where our I ready data that that. Uh Mrs. Sullivan, Superintendent Willard have been adamant about implementing in. In seven to twelve is the I ready data gives you. Data about the students that are in front of you right now and how they're doing about with the curriculum right now. That has data is is important, it can be valuable, but it's reflected, it's it's more reflective than what you're gonna do.
So yeah.
With the switch fiber.
And and the problem with the I ready data that we're finding is younger kids are very compliant. Younger kids, if you say work so hard on this and I'm gonna get you an ice cream, they're gonna work so super hard on it to get that ice cream. There's not as much value we're finding out at the high school level, because they've taken their M C A S, they know they're getting the diploma. But what we we need that data, because it helps us improve as educators and it helps give them a better education. So I think we need to do a better job as the educators to say to the kids, this is really important, not just for you, but for the kids coming after you. So that we can make sure we're giving you what you need to prepare you, because believe it or not, when you leave here. If you don't score high enough on a test in college, you gotta take remedial math, and guess what? It doesn't count as college credit.
So M C A S purely have no basis for your academic, they're merely a measuring point for.
And it says whether you can get a high school diploma or not.
Oh, it does.
Oh, it's a high stakes test, oh yes. That's why there's buy in on the M C A S, because if they don't pass it, they don't get a diploma.
But because these groups have already taken it, once they're passed.
In tenth grade. And those M C A S scores follow them, it's a little bit unclear whether their I ready scores follow them. Scholarship with them.
Right, I was just looking who got it this year, if the recipients were close to it, but.
So just to clear something up, sorry, when they get past, that you said they get past taking their M C A S and then there's. Where they take some and then they're not as motivated anymore.
To take like an I ready?
Oh, to do I ready, okay.
And the thing is, I ready data is much more, it it it's much faster, it's much more user friendly. Um you you can use it to inform your instruction a lot better, like from a teacher's perspective, the I ready data is much more friendly than the M C A S data. The problem, as Jen said, is if your kids are blowing it off, then what kind of data?
Right.
It's not, it's it's useless data. So, to what end?
Because no effort.
Right. There's no buy in, there's no buy in, then your data is not.
Right.
Real data. Doesn't matter.
So we have some logistical work to do around.
It's not just us, it's.
I'll try on the next one, I promise.
Okay.
I'll have my best stuff for that.
Please do, please share.
Does any of that eventually Z that I ready gonna ever get pulled into the part of the curriculum and it's part of your grade or something?
Uh we we've, we've talked to, we've talked about it, I mean, so then last year was.
I mean, you've got to figure out a way.
Yeah. Last year was our first year implementing I ready seven people, not not the most ideal condition to do.
Right.
To do it under. Um we've done it this year in English and math for our students that have English and math for a semester. Uh at fifth level and and our middle school kids um just took it. Last week, last week. Uh middle school do it three times, middle school kids will do it, do it twice, um.
Middle school data looks a lot different than high school data.
Yeah.
They still buy in.
But I mean, I.
Buy in. And they're used to it, correct. Like they've been doing it since fifth grade.
It's been, that it was better this time for our high school students than than last year as far as um. You know, effort and compliance and 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 taking it, um but we have, yeah, I mean, we have some work to do around.
Yeah, certainly.
The logistic logistical part of implementing this um. For our students, nine to twelve, but you know. We're we're committed to I ready, we're committed to doing this, we have a good plan in place. Um. The supports are there, the coaches look at this data, they review it with the teachers, the teachers are. Are really working hard to to find the. To pull out the relevance of it and to improve their instruction and their teaching, so, yeah, I mean, it it's it's new, there's some hurdles around it, there's a learning curve around it. But everyone is is being positive and open minded around how can we utilize this and and have it work for everybody, but. One of the simple things that we can do is work on. Some of the logistical incentive parts for for students. It's like a net inverse that's taken seriously, maybe it'd be a little better for us, but.
I don't know, well, okay, so we said, last year it was like strung on us, and that's why I feel like the data was skipped, because it was all, it was skip day that day. Not, no, it was skip day, but all of it.
But it was cute, because that's a school saying, yeah, that's skip day, great.
Rob, can you push me those?
Yes, absolutely.
Thanks.
So I guess it's somewhere in the next. Two or three years, we'll try, we'll be able to better see that some correlation hopefully between. Using I ready and it helping bump those scores, so I mean, I.
So they don't have I ready in um instructional, that's only up to grade eight, but they have Alex for their math.
Okay.
That is kind of like an I ready, um and the kids can go on and do Alex work.
Right, I think it's just an interesting thing to see five years from now, if our M C A S scores are are going down, then obviously maybe that. Platform is not working or vice versa, if it is going well, it really validates our. Our approach.
Yeah, I mean, the coaches have looked at both the M C A S data and the I ready data from last year, and and they have found some correlations between the two. Um. But it's early and we said we're learning.
You gotta build it, you gotta build the data set.
Yeah.
You have to.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, all right, thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, policies. We are at the third reading for B E D H public comment. Let's kind of look at this before it goes on the agenda next time, right, Amy?
No.
No, we will tonight.
Okay, awesome.
Has there been any, were there changes made the last time?
No.
Okay, so.
No, no, we've got no changes, we're basically looking to. Open this up to members of of the school community to allow. A more equitable. Opportunity to bring information. Anybody got any questions on that before I move forward? All right, so we've got a first reading for concussion policy. Uh there were some slight changes we need to make to this. Um we changed the regional school name. And then on the second page, we clarified what would happen for uh return to. Play protocol in the event that we are intermittently without a trainer. Other than that, I think that we didn't have any other changes, Richard?
No.
But was that no? I like this, Amy, that we put the changes in red, you can do that going forward, I think that would be very helpful. Any questions on this? No, no, okay.
Thanks, Joe.
Moving forward, all right, Superintendent Willard, are you ready?
I am.
It's on you, action items.
Move to approve the powder mill school site strategic plan for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year recommended.
Okay, there we go, um any questions or comments on this? Are there any questions? We'll take a real call vote to approve, Pam?
Yes.
Ryan?
I think Ryan left us.
Oh, okay.
I'm here, I couldn't find the mute button, yes.
You're not mute.
Unmute, yeah.
Did, Ryan, did you say, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay, Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Pat?
Yeah.
Erica?
Yes.
Rob is a yes, motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to accept the memorandum of agreement between the Southwick, Tallinn, Granville Regional School District. And the Southwick, Tallinn, Granville Education Association Custodial Unit E, which outlines the terms, conditions, and understandings related to overtime pay. For work performed between March twenty ninth, twenty twenty one, and April sixth, twenty twenty one, recommended.
For work performed between March twenty ninth, twenty twenty one and April sixth, twenty twenty one, recommended, so moved.
Any questions or comments on this? How many questions would the roll call vote to approve? Pam?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Pat?
Yeah.
Erica?
Yes.
And Rob's a yes, motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to accept the memorandum of agreement between the Southwick, Tallinn, Granville Regional School District and the Southwick, Tallinn, Granville Education Association Incorporated. Which outlines the terms, conditions, and understandings related to compensation for teachers who teach an extra period during their preparation period, recommended, so moved.
Second. Any questions or comments on this?
I think it's a great idea.
Awesome. So, all right, we'll take a roll call vote to approve, Pam?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Rob is a yes, motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to approve the Southwick Regional School fundraiser snack shack at SRS home winter games for the twenty one, twenty two school year proceeds to benefit the class of twenty twenty three, recommended.
So moved.
Second. Any questions on this? All right, we'll do a roll call vote, Pam?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Rob's a yes, motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to approve the pause PTO holiday bizarre fundraiser for the twenty one, twenty two school year. Proceeds to go towards the PTO general fund recommended, so moved.
Second. Any questions on this fundraiser? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, Pam?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Rob's a yes, motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to approve the home education proposals HS twenty one, twenty two dash sixty four. Through HS dash twenty one, twenty two dash sixty five, recommended.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments on this?
Yes, well, explain this one again.
Homeschool has to submit a education plan to the superintendent.
Okay, good.
So is that? The only question, so it's now November. So it's coming late.
So they come in all throughout the year and this child, I believe this child, Amy just withdrew from the school.
One of them.
One of them just withdrew from the school.
Okay, all right, so they, so there's not like they've been in limbo since September, okay?
No.
Okay.
There's no really deadline.
Oh, okay, it's a very.
So licensed there to be, Amy's worked really hard.
We see a deadline, but.
Yeah.
We made improvements, I mean.
Huge improvements.
Is that, eh eh, just a quick, is that something we may wanna entertain to have a deadline?
We do tentatively have a deadline, but there's, we can't really reject.
Oh, so there's no con- there's no consequence to not following, okay, all right.
Now.
So we have, so everybody out there, please follow the proposed deadlines.
Amy does a really good job, she sends out reminders over the summer, she's really been super proactive in it.
All right, well, that's good. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote to approve this, Pam?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Rob's a yes, motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to appoint Patrick Jobb as the official voting delegate to the twenty one, twenty two mask annual meeting, recommended.
So moved.
I'll second that one. So pressures on Mr. Jobb?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, that's good, so. What kind of things are we think we're gonna be voting on, unknown?
No. There's seven um proposals. Uh, one of them, I I I just was reading through them the other day, I I can't think of all of them off the top of my head, but one of them is about. Twenty minutes of mandated recess. Another one is about eliminating all um. Indigenous mascots. Eliminating them across the state, another one. Can't think of them all, but they're in our delegate, if we go, I was reading them online, so if you go online, you can look at them.
Okay.
And um see what they are, but those were the. The recess one was the one that interested me the most.
Is that for high school or just?
It, no, it's for all grades and these are just, they're just voting on it. And then they're making the recommendation um to the legislatures that's saying mask is in support of these.
So these are really non-binding, it's.
Yeah, they're just saying mask is in support of these to go to.
And then on the floor. There's always increase about a hundred percent. In other words, they'll add as much as they they give you ahead of time.
Okay.
Because they can bring stuff up at the floor.
Oh, okay, so there's there's seven things that are gonna be brought up and then it's a free for all.
Interesting.
There we go. I don't remember signing up for this. Guess what, Pat, we're voting to make you the representative right now, here we go, Pam?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Pat?
I pity him.
You can abstain, you can vote for yourself, you can, you can say no or yes, okay. Erica?
Yes.
Rob's a yes, motion passes seven zero zero.
Uh, move to accept the revised policy BEDH public participation at full committee meetings, recommended, so moved.
Second. There we go. Got a break, all right, any questions on this before we vote this through? Okay, fantastic, we'll do a roll. I'm I'm doing the best I can, Pam, we're almost done. All right, Pam?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
And Rob's a yes, motion passes seven zero zero. All right. Superintendent Willard, do you have any reports for us this week?
I just have the current vaccination rate, so last week we sent out a a letter stating where we were at the current vaccination rates. So as of today, we have three hundred forty two students out of six hundred fifty five, so our student enrollment went up one at the regional school in the past week. And we have seventy one staff out of a hundred and five who've been vaccinated, which brings us from to fifty four percent at the regional school vaccination rate. So. I am still working with Annie Larkham, our human resource specialist, she said it says that another reminder to staff members to submit. Um, their vaccination if they can to let us know. Um, and but the interesting thing is we did get an increase of seven kids in one week who got vaccinated up at the regional school. So that was a significant jump.
We're getting there, and the teachers, if I my math, that we're, that'll be more north of seventy percent now.
Was sixty, no, sixty eight percent, it's six, but you.
Okay. We're almost there, so that's, so thank you for all the teachers for doing this.
Yes.
That gives us twenty nine percent or thirty one percent left.
Yep.
But yeah, we we get, we need, so at this rate, we'll be all set at eighty percent, guys, right around June the fourteenth, so.
Jen, I had Karen ask me how we knew who was vaccinated and.
As students?
Uh, well, just how we knew the vaccination rate in general. And I said, well, my understanding is that this is um public health data and that when, you know, that information goes into a database.
Yes.
Right.
Maven.
And that's how we know, because she was like, I don't think I ever answered a survey about whether or not my kid was vaccinated.
No, it's it's in Maven and our school nurses have access to it and the teacher data is just voluntarily solicited.
So you don't have Maven teacher data because they live in multiple communities, is that correct?
Different places, yes, correct.
What if, if they did hit the eighty percent, is there something that I I haven't looked into it too deeply, you have to submit something to the state to show?
Yeah. Attestation, yes.
Yeah, and then it has to go back to the school committee. To get approved.
True, yeah.
Because the first, because I didn't know that, because the first school that made it. Even though they met the threshold.
Yeah.
They still had to go back to their school committee to get it approved. So I don't, I I don't know how that actually worked out, I'm assuming.
Well, I'm sure they did it, they, yeah, they wouldn't have put it in without the school committee approval.
Yeah.
Um, but there's only twenty schools right now across the entire state that have been.
Yeah.
Have met that target and it's out in the rest of the state.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, all right.
What I have for you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Presnell, are you still with us tonight?
I am, Mr. I am, Mr. Chairman, but I. I do not have a report for you this evening.
No report, well, thank you so, um, thank you for speaking in there. All right, well, these N liaisons. Negotiation, so we got anything coming up?
Yeah, we met with the custodial group, uh, was that sometimes?
Last Wednesday?
Last Wednesday. Making progress, uh, I think we've got a meeting on.
Wednesday.
The time.
Yeah, next, so next week, we've gone through some initial rounds of of their proposals and. Have worked through some stuff, working through some salary stuff, so it's moving along. I don't know if you guys have any to say about it.
I wasn't here for last week's, uh, I really don't have anything to add.
But we're balanced, Gordon. Yeah. This is typical. No, the first three meetings are sort of uh. Uh, we're getting, we're 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 sort of. Feeling each other out. A little bit, you know. And from here on out, it will speed up. Yeah, we're past the initial phase of the initial wants and. Yeah, because the first three meetings, you're you're getting what they want, what we're telling them, stuff that we want. It takes a little while. I wish we're putting the vegetables in the vegetable soup.
That's good, now we just gotta separate.
I hate this.
So we, and so I I I.
Love it.
I anxiously await the vegetable soup update, next, next. Uh, finance. We, when's our next meeting, Amy, I was just trying to look and I don't see it on there.
We mentioned.
Is it next Thursday?
You guys had it while I was gone, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's the eighteen.
The eighteen?
Eighteenth, the third Thursday.
Okay, all right, well, I'm gonna make sure I get those, yes, we've got the eighteen coming up. What do we got on track for that, Mr. Presnell, is there anything?
Yeah, we're gonna talk about the budget table, um, the budget roundtable agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, right, because yes, we have that coming up, right, we're on what, December the second?
Yes.
All right, so LB BEC, let's do this, the one Pam, the one that you're on, LPVAC, let's do that.
So I um attended my last meeting, um, must have been a week or so ago. Um, and Erica will now take over for me, LPVAC, so. You know, it was, it was really wonderful, I have to say, I, you know, I think I was on the board. A year and a half maybe. Um, it really was a wonderful learning experience for me, just learning more about what LPVAC as an organization does. Um, you know, I, during the time I was, I served on the board. Um, we executed the most important role of the board, which is to hire the their executive director, which is equivalent to their superintendent. Um, so I was a part of that process, I've seen, you know, Roland um now acting in that position and and been incredibly impressed. Um, you know, and uh, I I think it it's been a great opportunity for me, I think it'll be a great opportunity for you and. I've really been impressed in the direction um and with with his leadership.
Next meeting's the seventeenth.
Oh, there you go.
Awesome.
So the other, with the LPVAC that I'm on, we're actually having our first meeting on the seventeenth. Um, so we'll see how that goes, we signed. Oh, some sort of payment that they needed here a couple of weeks ago, so. Signing electronic signature on that, so we'll see how that first meeting goes. Uh, policy, we've got a meeting coming up at four, before our next. Meeting. Uh, we've got.
Is Joe joining us for that meeting?
Yeah.
I know. Right.
Yes, we invited him, and I believe he said he could be there.
Yeah, did we send that, did we send that policy out to um?
Yep.
Legal to take a look at, okay, interesting. So we've got, so concussion is basically out and on the docket now. Do we have any, I guess, Amy, are there, because we'll have some holes in that meeting, right?
Yeah, we have.
There was something else.
Old school.
No, 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 that would, do you know what I mean, like if we've got.
I have to look at the list.
Yeah, because I mean, concussion's out, the other one, so we've only really got the homeschool one that we're looking at right now, so.
Spotted across us so that I know we put into the folder and said, okay, that's next.
Dress code.
Oh, yeah, yeah, dress code, right.
Yes, that's.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah.
Wasn't. We, yeah, we're hoping to get that clarified, so it's gonna go to first reading. Next meeting. Because it, we were, we're, we've got one coming up where they want to make a slight adjustment to the dress code pertaining to hacks. Um, so stay tuned. It's coming. Um, all right, uh, buildings and grounds.
Nothing very good at the moment, everything's fine.
Good. IOT.
We had a meeting today.
Oh.
For IOT, it's a very busy meeting, there was a lot, um. The, let's see if I remember it all, if I don't, Ryan and Jen, help me out here. Um, so the first portion of it was um, the process in how um. IOT or the smaller curriculum group um looks at and vets curricula. Um, we've gone through this process recently with literacy, um, but next on the docket is is science. Um, and and that's an unusually tricky one. Um, because the national and state framework for science has recently changed in in. Um, it's far more than content change, pedigree change.
Phenomenon.
Yes, exactly, phenomenon based science. Um, and the sadly, there's not a not a lot of curriculum materials that have been vetted by the vetting sources that we trust, such as Curate. Um, and so there's an entire process that the state has just put forth with regards to. Um, how you should go about analyzing vetting and piloting curricula. Um, and so it's really, there's a lot of, like, before you even get to, let's look at what we've got for science.
Yeah.
There's a lot of the process uh that has to take place, and so that's just beginning, I'm just getting underway. Um, and um. Then, uh, after that was, oh yes, was our Easter three grant. Um, how much money, um, you know, we were allocated and um. The grants that Jenny wrote and how the district intends to spend that money. Um, and I'm sure she'll make a presentation to the whole school committee about that. Um, and then the last one, what was the last one, Jen?
We talked about our reading program that got vetted by Curate entirely.
That's right. That's right, um, so they had. Prior to the reading program that they have previously selected, being dreaded by Curate, it hadn't been.[1613.61] And then after they selected it and started implementing and using it, it was rated by Curate, so everybody was like, whoa, fingers crossed, but Curate actually approved every aspect of it. Um, and it was, it was a win-win for everybody.
So no whoopie moments.
Right, exactly, exactly. The 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 science is going to be much more challenging and I just, I haven't been through it already. Myself in my own district, I just encourage the districts to take their time and not spend too much money on something that's gonna be binding for the long term.
Right.
Um, Jenny made a, um, with regard to the literacy one, I think it was, um. Uh, something came out about how, um, it's kind of too much to teach in one year.
Can't teach it all in one year, right?
Right, and you know, if if I had one with regard to the curriculum that I adopted for science for grade six, three, if I had. One giant criticism, it would be that it's just way too much, and I spent the last five years trying to tease out like the what's important.
Right.
All right, well, thank you. Uh, wellness.
No.
Nothing?
That's next one.
Ben? Anything? Technology must have had a meeting, right?
Great mystery.
Steve, I thought you were setting one up. Uh, Southwick Capital Committee, Mr. Jobb, have we had any?
I had my first meeting Thursday night in Hyannis. Not working. Yeah, nothing today.
And you're our legislative liaison, we're anxiously awaiting a feedback on that meeting.
So, but I do, actually, there is a meeting for the master plan Thursday night.
Oh, thank goodness.
First one, I will be hopefully attending via Zoom.
This Thursday?
This Thursday, yeah, or maybe not.
Are you shaking your head saying no, there's not?
I do have to get some.
All right.
We're gonna keep them busy at the conference.
That's it.
That's right, I am attending the conference.
Right, we have nobody in the room other than us, so we're gonna move past our second public comment. Um, old business, budget round table, December second at five thirty. I mean, I think it's just, it's the finance committee that goes to that?
It is, and then at our next income meeting, we'll get together and we'll talk about specific agenda points you want me to talk about.
Yeah, and Jenny, if you could just give a quick synopsis of what that meeting is?
It's just a summary of where we are and, um, for example, when we were potentially looking at outsourcing transportation, we talked about it at that meeting. Uh, when we have a declining enrollment, um, I usually mention the whole harm risk, um.
Is this the one with the select board there?
The select board and the fin comes come, and it's also an opportunity for them to tell us anything that's going on in like in their communities. For example, there was the year talent had the fire and they, you know, just wanted to be aware that they were gonna have to purchase some extra vehicles. We do see yourself was becoming an ALS ambulance and that was their priority for the year, so we just trying to be respectful. Um, we always bring forward a very fiscally conservative budget, we try to live within our means. Um, but give our students the best possible education. So, um, they're really good, one of the main things that we are going to have to talk about this year. Is where their local uh contributions ended up compared to what they paid last year. Because I don't want them to think it's gonna be the the significant jump next year, but I want them to be prepared.